All right, good morning, everybody. It is nine oh two. We'll go ahead and call the county commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance, and I'll have Natalie lead us this morning.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you, Natalie. Call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or by telephone by calling six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Just a reminder too, also, if you would please silence your cell phone so you do not disrupt the flow of the meeting, that is appreciated as well. Commissioners, any conflict of interest items?
No.
No.
Okay. Moving on to item number four, I would make, before we take action to approve the agenda, I would make a amend amended motion to amend the agenda for a fireworks permit to.
Declaring.
Okay. To make a motion to add the declaring of an emergency for fireworks permit for Bendix for a fireworks show on Saturday.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. It was tough to get through that. I apologize. Motion by McElhaney, second by Johnson. Discussion on that motion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. So we, before we get to that, we will move on to item number five, action to approve the July first minutes. Yeah, okay, so looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Gable, thank you. Second by McElhaney. All in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, item number five, action to approve the July first minutes of the Board of the Cottington County Commission. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move back to that amended item on the agenda, and I would ask that our state's attorney, Allison, come forward, please, and kind of give us a brief rundown on this situation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Now, just turn that button. There you go.
Ah, there we go. Um, so yesterday it came to our attention that there was a fireworks permit that was issued by the city of Watertown for a fireworks show to occur on this Saturday. That fireworks permit was issued pursuant to their authority. However, the fireworks themselves are to be lit off in the backyard of a property. That property is outside of the one mile radius that the city has jurisdiction over. Recognizing, one, the miscommunication, the approval by the city, and frankly, this last minute hearing. The fact that this is an emergency is for the commission to basically give the city due regard for their permit on this one temporary basis. The citizens and the constituents have had the opportunity to contest that that approval at the June, I believe it was second, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Watertown City Council. Based on that and based on the inconvenience, as well as the fact that this petitioner has obtained necessary permits. Based on the law in South Dakota, we can approve that permit on an emergency basis, basically giving it due weight within the county. And so that's what we're here to do today.
Motion to approve the permit.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Are you serving prime rib during that fireworks show?
Hold for.
I have one question. Where is the permit so that we can get signatures? Or do we need?
Thirty, what's your address, Jeff? Thirty-one?
Thirty-one twenty one Garcia Drive.
Thirty-one twenty one.
Then the fire marshal signed it went through the city. I got it. Copy that yesterday and brought it over to the sheriff's office and dropped it off there. Over the one that the city and the fire department signed. And law and justice, you can sign.
Okay, perfect.
The fault by the city is they changed the law, their laws a couple of years ago, and so they just never passed it on to the commissioners because they thought they didn't need to.
Oh, well.
But I tried to do it.
Okay.
Right.
That's a process that we will be looking at to ensure that this don't happen again. So.
Right.
Jeff is just trying to make it rain some more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last year.
So.
Right up until next year, right?
This year's the whole.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the monthly reports and the state's attorney's report. Allison.
Yes, good morning. So in reviewing our handbook, I discovered that I'm supposed to be giving you a monthly report, and so here's here's the update, the status of the state's attorney's office. Over the Fourth of July weekend, July third through the sixth, the Watertown Police Department and the Cottington County Sheriff's Office responded to well over three hundred calls for service. My office, as well as our community, thanks them for their service over the holiday. It was a successful holiday with not, not a ton of incidents that would cause my office to be concerned. We're currently working through calculating the number of successful juvenile diversion cases for the JDI, JDAI grant. Carrie from my office is working with Louis Canfield. As you'll remember, we received two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars last year as a result of our successful diversion cases. And so we're hopeful that we will receive approximately that same amount this year. Watertown has started a sexual assault response team that is done through the Beacon Center. I serve as a member of that team. We meet quarterly. Angie Colligan with the Community Service Office has started an opioid overdose response team in conjunction with Emily's Hope, which includes a leave back program where they'll be leaving Narcan with individuals who have suffered an overdose. Our adult diversion program with Angie started on July one. We're continuing to work through that process. It's, it's a slow work in progress, but we're hopeful that we'll get it completely up and running in the next couple of weeks. We're trying to reduce long-term jail stays. The longest residents in our county jail are there waiting for beds because of competency issues or restoration, competency restoration, or their psychosexual evaluations. We're trying to get these cases done in under five months. That's my hope, and so we're trying to move through those quickly. Joe from my office just finished representing the county in the administrative appeals with the Equalization Office in Pier. We should get those written decisions soon, and I will review them to see if we need to appeal them. I continue to meet with the police department and the sheriff's office to review their investigations weekly. We had one tax-free assessment appeal with the treasurer's office that resulted in a default judgment on behalf of the county. We have three active habeas cases that I represent the county on. Or I'm sorry, I represent the warden on behalf of the county. I continue to receive civilian complaints regarding different issues that the Attorney General's Office has decided that my office has to investigate specifically regarding other governmental bodies. I just recently received one against the city of Watertown. That investigative opinion was drafted and sent out yesterday. I continue to review current case law. The South Dakota Supreme Court releases new opinions every Thursday at ten a.m. I review those to update law enforcement on the changes in laws. I'm trying to be more active in attending county meetings, so I have been attending, I did attend the Joint Planning and Board of Adjustment Meeting a couple of weeks ago. At the end of May, I attended the Intimate Partner Violence Investigative Training at the Police Department. Yesterday, we selected a new grand jury panel that will serve for twelve months. Our reach team continues to meet in Watertown just about every Tuesday. And just a side note, the majority of our cases are kept in-house. We do not send cases off to the Attorney General's Office unless they were previously with the Attorney General's Office. Our conflict cases go to other state's attorneys, and I handle their conflict cases. I, I recognize that I am sometimes difficult to catch in the office because I'm kind of all over the place. If you need to meet with me, you can call my office at six zero five eight eight two six two seven six, and they can set you up with a meeting or a phone call with me.
All right.
That's my.
Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Gable? Going to turn your mic on, Commissioner. Thank you.
As far as just delays in length of stay, what, are we tracking the average length of stay right now?
I believe Brad is tracking that. I have not personally been tracking that.
On the past, it was in the fourteen, fifteen days area.
Right.
Difficult to see if we can get that down. Good. And then the, so the, so you're saying that the really long stays right now are pretty much due to some other, I'd say, process, not the, not the inmate or the inmate's attorney filing motions and things like?
Right. Those individuals, the individuals that are our longest residents right now, one was sentenced to the penitentiary last Wednesday. That was waiting on a psychosexual evaluation. We have another individual that's been in there approximately two hundred days. We're waiting for a bed for competency restoration. There's another one with a similar circumstance. We're trying to get them moving through the system quickly. The less time they spend in our custody, the less risk of a liability on behalf of the county.
Do, what I've heard in other states sometimes are that the state crime lab can be a real delay. Is that, that a, not, not the state or?
Yeah.
Understand the issue.
The state crime lab is a mess, if I'm being frank. Our fees for laboratory testing went up as of July one. They're not terribly more expensive, but they are more expensive than they were previously. Our turnaround time on a standard alcohol DUI is approximately four to six weeks for blood tests. Our turnaround time for a standard drug DUI is close to six months. Testing substances that we need to try cases on is about three to four months right now. We've explored options with different laboratories around the country. The problem that we have with that, and there are other counties that use some of these other labs. South Dakota state law allows us to lay foundation for evidence that comes through the state lab by affidavit. South Dakota state law does not permit us to lay that same foundation for out-of-state labs. So I would have to call all of the witnesses from the laboratory in California that had chain of custody of the evidence in order to properly lay foundation, which would be thousands and thousands of dollars. So.
It's not typical. I mean, I, I mean, it's not, you need to South Dakota, I think. I think that a lot of states have similar problems.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of problems kind of all across the board with state labs. Obviously, there's certain testing that if the case warrants, that I send out to other laboratories.
Thanks.
So.
Okay.
Um, I do have item eight on the agenda as well. I have not gotten a bid back yet on that, so we can remove that for today.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and remove item number eight. We'll put that back on the agenda when you get the bid?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and my budget.
Is that?
Sorry, guys, number seven.
All right, yep, let's do that.
Nothing super exciting has changed. You'll notice in my budget, it says the state's attorney juvenile diversion funds, that's at two hundred and thirty seven thousand that we received last year, we believe will receive approximately the same amount this year. Our membership dues are going to increase just a little bit based on the amount of time that the attorneys in my office have practiced. After you've been practicing for five years, your bar dues go up. Let's see, the other larger amount, larger change. Sorry, I'm trying to find it here. Oh, travel. Travel expenses have increased. The reason for that is the South Dakota State Bar has recommended to the South Dakota Supreme Court that attorneys are required to obtain continuing legal education credits. South Dakota Supreme Court has not yet approved that, although I do foresee that in the near future. So in order for our licenses to be valid, we'll have to continue ongoing training. Was there something else? Oh, yeah, my explanations are attached.
See anything that really jumps out there?
Yeah, nothing should be too much different than it was previously, except that travel expenses did increase just based on our expectation that we're going to be required to attend more conferences.
Okay.
So.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you gonna be in your office whenever we get done?
I have a virtual opioid response team meeting at ten o'clock, but I will be there during that time. You can also call me anytime.
All right, thank you, Allison.
Uh, yeah.
Let's move on to the auditor's report. Brenda.
All right, good morning, everyone. Continue to work on the twenty twenty six provisional budget, and we'll be starting the anticipated revenues and expenditures for twenty twenty six. I've entered the growth reports that the Director of Equalization has provided me with and participating in the webinars on voter list maintenance, which is on off-election years, otherwise business as usual. So we can, my budget as well. We have that information in there. Actually, my budget decreased this year, so a decrease of fifteen thousand nine forty-five. And then right behind it is the election budget, which that went up some. The last election year in twenty twenty four was ninety-five eighty-one thirty. This year, I put it at one hundred and four. Increased some of the supplies. I bumped that up a little bit, and precinct workers bumped that up a little bit. Otherwise, yeah. And also the election, other current expenditures, I put that up just a little bit. It's kind of hard to anticipate some of those things, but overall, you have any questions? Did anticipate, put in a four percent raise, just like most of the other department houses for wages and salary.
So, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So, did you say, it looks like an overall decrease a little bit for your, for the auditor part of the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
That's good.
And I have the breakdown is on like the third page right behind my budget, so you can kind of go through.
Okay.
Most everything I did no change. I did increase the minor repairs and maintenance by fifteen hundred, otherwise no change in most everything else.
All right, anybody have any questions on the budget? If not, thank you very much. We'll move on to the Director of Equalization. Shawna. Morning.
Morning.
I don't have too much to report. We're doing normal daily business. The office is working on sales transfers, splits and new plats, and the Praezers are out working in the field around Lake Compesca. We did go to, I went to the O H E hearings in Pier, not last week, the week before. They seemed to go pretty good. Deputy State's Attorney Thronson was really good, I thought, for his first time. We'll just have to wait and see what their verdict is when, when they mail it out. So that's really all I have for my monthly report.
All right, let's go over your budget.
All right, my budget, the biggest increase is going to be for personnel. We put a proposed four percent employee wage increase, ten percent estimated health increase, and a ten percent estimated dental insurance increase. There's not really much of an increase for anything else besides pictometry. We are doing a new flyover this year. We're starting a new three-year term contract. They had accidentally flown over the whole county doing a three-inch imagery like they did with the town. Didn't charge us for it, so that was really nice. But now we have three-inch imagery prices or pictures, and we will be going backwards. I think we decided on a six percent or six inch for the county, which is going to be a little better than we had six years ago, but not as good as what we had three years ago. But it's going to be a little bit of an increase in price, so.
So can you explain the difference between three?
Oh, sorry, just.
Must be like pixels?
It must be pixels. Yep, that's how they all explain it. But way better pictures to measure and things online, and they're all three and four dimensional, so we can do that. But the more pixels or the less pixels you have, the way better quality the picture is, the more pixels you have, you're losing that quality, but you're still, you still can see a big difference. And if any of you guys ever wanted to see that, we have on our computers in our pictometry, it shows you all the different flyovers. You can click on the different ones. And it's really neat to see the difference in, in the quality of those pictures and what you can see.
Smells better.
Mm-hmm, a year. Yep.
Is this the same as we could see of like in MapNet?
Yes.
Same, same imagery?
Same and, same imagery that is on our
Yeah, so.
and First District's website. Yep.
So residents can go look at that.
Yes.
And if they, you just mentioned it, but that's on the First District Association of Local Governments website.
Yep.
They scroll to the bottom, they can click on the MapNet, and then select the county that they want to look at. All the GIS information is on there.
Yes, and not all the counties on there have pictometry, but they do have Google Maps and stuff like that.
A lot of good information.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the three-year contract with the pictometry guides, did we already, did we already do that, renew that?
We have not signed anything yet, no. But we will be with, in the next months. They came and spoke with me and the city, and then basically the city signs the contract, and then we do an MOU with them for the payment each year. But no, the contract has not been signed or finalized yet.
Okay, anything? Anything else? All right, thank you. Community Services Director, Sarah Faust. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Good. Okay, start with my monthly report. You have the graph in front of you with our numbers. Services were down a little bit in June, but I think that's just some normal summertime drop-off. They were down last summer as well, so pretty equivalent to last June. Thirty-nine unique individuals served with seventy different services provided and seventy-three total client contacts last, in June. Funeral costs continue to be our biggest expense. South Dakota CARES and ERA is where most of the time, or the time in case management have been spent. I don't think there's anything else that's really significant on there. Do you have any questions about the data piece?
How, how are we doing on the funeral assistance as, as far as your budget?
We're good. We're less than half, so, so we're, yeah, I think it's a forty thousand dollar budget, so we're, we're okay so far, as long as we keep, kind of keep that pace.
Yeah.
For my monthly report, we were reimbursed three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in administrative fees for the CARES ERA. We, that program ends, we stopped taking applications this Friday, which means that we will no longer have those South Dakota CARES funds to help with rental assistance. There's limited funds available for rental assistance, so we could see some real issues with people being able to afford rent that have significant issues, so just to be aware of that. For our impact or CHW, we were reimbursed two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-five cents through Medicaid reimbursement for June for the CHW services in our office. We're, I'm continuing to look for office space for our staff. We're not doing, we're being very diligent about what we're looking for there and wanting to find the right, right option for us. I did attend the South Dakota Housing Development Association Housing Conference in Pier in June, which was a good conference, some good information, some things I think we can work with in our community, so I'm excited to use that information. And I also completed the Train the Trainer for Transition to Success, and we're going to hold another Transition to Success training in August for community members that are interested in that. For Systems of Care, we have our inter-agency meeting this week on Teams at nine a.m. Everybody is welcome to join us. Email me if you want the link for that. Angie, in our office, and Louis from the Boys and Girls Club will both be presenting on adult and juvenile diversion programs, kind of since adult diversion is new, and we've been working on that, we wanted to get the word out and make sure people are aware of that and, and how that relates to juvenile diversion. Our agency of the month this month is Park and Rec, and then our individual of the month is Cassie Banky with Game Fish and Parks. They, the July is National Parks Month, and so that's why we chose them. Centralized location for that, we're, again, along with looking for our office, we are working on developing a business plan and looking at potential buildings that we can use for centralized location. For housing, we're finalizing a For housing, we're finalizing a comprehensive housing plan for our whole community, addressing all of the housing needs in the, in Watertown and Cottington County. Childcare, we are working with W D C and the consultant that we've been working with to make childcare more affordable. Our next step will be to bring businesses into the picture and see how they can help be a part of that solution. And as always, check out Cottington Connects at W W W dot Cottington Connects dot com for more events and information.
Okay, any questions? Right, sounds good. Let's go over your budget.
Okay, so, um, actually, my salary went down a little bit as what I, from what I projected. This does not include Angie's salary because that's a grant-funded salary, so this is just what we currently have versus what I had proposed last year, so we stayed in line there. The biggest increase is the health insurance. We did do the ten percent increase. Um, with that, we did do a four percent salary increase for our offices as well. Um, so that is where that increase was. I did increase the amount for office rent because we don't know what that looks like, and so I put that at eighteen hundred dollars a month, just um, with uncertainty of what we will have next year for that. Um, also, kind of along the lines with that, I put six thousand dollars in for office repair in anticipation that we might have to do some renovating for an office space. And, um, I did drop the prescription drug assistance by two thousand dollars because we have not used that for several years, and so um, just felt appropriate to do that. Our utilities went up a little bit, and that's the cell phone use for our C H Ws to be able to have cell phones, so they don't have to use their personal phones. And so that's kind of where I felt a slight increase in the budget. Any questions?
So am I seeing this right? Overall, your budget went way down?
Um, no, it was, it was at, the budget for this year was five forty-eight, eight hun- eight hundred and six total, and this year it's five sixty-one, one ninety-four, or for tw- two, twenty twenty-six, that.
We got ERA there.
Oh, yes, that's the ERA, that funding, that we get, we're just a pass-through for the ERA funds, and that's made it confusing. I think Brenda had taken it out. After, yeah, but that ERA funding is.
That's like three hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, and so that was just the state pass-through money that.
Thought there my math was slipping from eight hundred, that was to five hundred and some thousand.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
No, that's, yeah.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Sarah.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, let's see. Eight was pulled off the agenda for today. Number nine is action to approve a resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine for continued support of the First District Association of Local Governments.
God, central ledger.
By McElhaney, we have a second by Gable. Discussion, Brenda.
Um, so I'll just explain. March twenty twenty-two, First District governing body adopted a due schedule for twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-two, the flat rate. Fee due structure is based upon the twenty twenty census population uh, to continue support for the First District for F Y twenty twenty-six. Cottington County dues will be fifty thousand three thirty-six forty-seven.
Fifty thousand, what was that amount again, Brenda? I'm sorry, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
I thought it was the same as before.
Okay.
Right.
I made the motion.
We needed a motion and a second anyway.
If no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten is action to declare surplus scrapers and miscellaneous parts at the highway shop to be sold on Purple Wave. Randy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Randy. Morning.
Going to get rid of some of this stuff.
Yes, slow but sure.
Go ahead.
Yes, as Troy mentioned, this is to sell on Purple Wave two of our older, oldest pieces of equipment, actually, are two Euclid scrapers. Uh, the oldest one is a nineteen sixty-five T S fourteen, model number seven. Serial number three nine seven zero two. It was actually purchased in nineteen sixty-five. Last time it saw service was in two thousand and seven, so that's eighteen years. The second scraper, also Euclid, nineteen sixty-eight, T S fourteen, model number thirteen, serial number four nine four eight five. And then along with that, there is some miscellaneous filters, belts, and edges which are only particular to these two pieces of elderly equipment. So I would just like to sell those along with the two scrapers, again, to be listed on Purple Wave.
Motion by Gable. Second by McElhaney. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, so good luck.
Oh, thank you.
There might be some interest in them.
Good.
Item number eleven is action to authorize advertising for bidding of County Road four A asphalt resurfacing, uh, Main Street in Florence.
Correct. Just for bid letting, uh, we want to post this so that we can open it on July twenty-second. This is a six-block stretch in the town of Florence. It runs from State Highway twenty-two over to the school, which is our County Road twenty-three. It is just a two-inch mill and overlay, except for a portion in front of the fire department, which we've had some oyster issue with. We want to dig down, uh, twenty-four inches, re-bed that so we can clear up the water issue.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ready.
Item number twelve is discussion possible action to approve concrete project for the county courthouse. And that would be Steve. Hi, Steve.
Good morning. Okay, what I have funny first is concrete slab and a wall put on in the southwest corner of the courthouse. This would be to put, uh, the dumpsters that right now sit on part of the parking lot. This is probably brought up from a couple of years ago of having dumpsters down at the end of the street brought up. Um, we brought them up to the courthouse. The issue about it is by the courthouse, um, the sheriff is concerned about anything might be put in the dumpsters to cause an issue with the courthouse, so this is what I'm proposing. You can look at the picture here. The slab would be put all the way up to the shed and then wall built around that to block off anything from disrupting the courthouse for any kind of issue.
And the wall is a concrete wall?
Yep, concrete wall. I do have footings just in case. We wanted to not have the wall of a cement wall to put a mortar wall around it, which I have not got quotes for that. Um, I would assume it's going to be a whole lot more expensive, um, putting a block wall around that, so.
It'll clean it up nice.
But, yeah.
How tall is the wall?
Six-foot wall.
Six-foot.
Yep, yep, so it's high enough because the dumpsters actually set about, probably about four and a half to five feet in the air, so. And that would be, that amount is seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eight cents.
Is that a budgeted item?
This is budgeted items.
So moved.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion? With the budgeted item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approved concrete project for the extension complex, number thirteen.
Yes, this is to replace a couple of the gutters of the sidewalk, um, to be tore out on the east side of the extension complex that you can see. It's all crumbling, falling away, which would end up being a dangerous spot for pedestrians walking on that sidewalk. This is more or less due because there's always an ice buildup and it's salted quite a bit there, so it's it, the concrete is just eroding away because of the salts.
Motion approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney.
And that amount is one hundred, or one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion possible action to approve a concrete project for Memorial Park.
Okay, this is two items actually, um, out at the park. One is to, uh, cement the small picnic shelter. I don't have a picture. I I requested them to send me a picture from out there, but they hadn't responded to me this morning. So, uh, but this would be underneath the one picnic shelter. It does not have cement. It's a dirt floor. It rarely gets rented just because nobody wants this, the, the dirt floor out there and so that. Plus, the, it's, there's a seven and a half foot circle inside the Girl Scout building. This here is actually where the fire pit or the fireplace that was placed in that thing, and it's all tore out, and there is block down, probably almost two foot down below for heat and so that. This is to fill that in and, and cement that, and then we can, that's where we're going to epoxy the floor in that building.
Motion approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any further discussion? And again, is this a budgeted item?
It is.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that amount is five thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Eighty-three cents.
Or eighty-three, excuse me.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, now let's talk about camera upgrades at the courthouse, number fifteen.
Okay, this is the estimate quote. Um, I had to get a re-estimate and so that because it's been a few months ago since we did it because this is, was going through the the, um, U S G S grant dollars and so that, that, uh, the Sheriff's Department had, um, reached out that we were getting awarded. This would, that would cover part of this cost of this. Um, partially, it increased um, about a thousand dollars to what it was originally because of, uh, of the, um, in bar, or the, um, uh, tariff, tariffs and so that, so some things had increased. Um, this amount for this upgrades would, would actually add some cameras and upgrade the cameras to a better pixel zoom in to everything um, and so that than what we originally have. Uh, we're placing some cameras, um, right in the front door, um, also in the southwest sto- southwest corner of the courthouse, and then a few more in the courthouse itself, and so that, so. Um, this amount is for thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and five dollars and forty cents.
So the camera, you said you're replacing them?
Some of the cameras in here are getting replaced. Some are analogs in the courthouse, what we currently have, so there is no zoom in or anything on some of these cameras and so that, that we have. These new cameras will zoom in on a particular item now, um, and they also, all of them record, so there's recordings on all these. The other ones that we have in the courthouse right now do not all record.
So there's no additions?
Um, additions, there're going to be addition up here in the first floor. There'll be an addition on the third floor by the elevator and the, and going up into the attic. And then there's also one on the second floor that will, um, place, um, in front of the courtroom area in the lobby there, so if there's any kind of action going, taken on, security guard can see that, and then there'll be recordings of that. And then plus southwest corner of the courthouse will have a camera to face more to the west of the courthouse and to the south on the parking lot. Um, there'll be additional camera facing towards the generator here, um, and then one put right in front on the door and the entrance, front entrance.
So is the monitoring screen big enough to handle?
It's big enough to handle. There're just multiple sections and so that, what it is, you just divide it up. You have up to twenty-four sections, I think, you can put on a game, on a monitor.
Motion do approve.
All right, motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any questions?
What, uh, what approximately, what was the, uh, from the Sheriff's Department, that number?
Um, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, I think, is what.
That's the, that was my question. So that's the U J S grant?
Yep, yep, that's U S G.
You have U J S.
Yep, U J S, there you go.
So that take it down under thirty?
Yep, I did budget well, um, ahead of what I had for this here quote, but that grant will actually help offset quite a bit of that.
So it'll just, it'll offset up this amount that's shown here, correct?
Nope, this is the total amount.
This is total amount, so.
Without.
But as far as what, but that, that grant helps again.
That grant helps towards this.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
You bet.
Is that all we have for you? Okay. All right, let's move on to item number sixteen, action to approve the auditor's account with a treasure and note monthly register of deeds fees.
All right, so you have that information in front of you. Hmm.
I can't hear your voice.
I can't talk anymore. Want to talk for you? Let me take a drink of water. This happens often, so. On the once, on the one sheet, you can see at the last day of June, uh, the exact amount of money that was in the possession of the treasure, right down to the pennies, everything um, that was accounted for, the twenty-nine million forty-three six ten ninety-six, and then on the other sheet, the auditor's account with the county treasurer, um, cash on hand, the checking investments, and then you get down to the custodial funds, the amounts that go to the schools, the township, city and towns. Same amount, twenty-nine, twenty-nine million forty-three six ten ninety-six, and then the, um, registered deeds fees for the month of June is fifty-four thousand fifty-seven forty.
All right, looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seventeen is action to approve claims for payment, Brenda.
Right, so you have that information in front of you as well. I didn't really highlight anything, um. The last page has a total, I was just going to look and see here our court-appointed attorney, what our amount was there.
Eighty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Yeah, um, I'll have to check that out and see where we're at. Like I said, I'll be working on the revenues and expenditures, so I'll let you know that, um. So the total amount of claims for the month was one million ninety-one thousand two hundred and thirty-four, and then state pass-through amount, though, was six hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. So actual county claims is four hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. I would also like to add, so, um, I didn't have the M and P in there because we had to get the miscellaneous transferred over, so when we did these claims, I didn't have that done yet. So we also need to pay so we can have this included with our verified claims, because it usually is, um, to the S D A C O, which is South Dakota Association, the county officials, for the M and P funds for the registered deeds, and that amount is seven hundred thirty-six dollars, and that's M and P relief collections for the registered deeds. So if I could have this all together in one, um, motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Gable and a second by McElhaney to do that all in one motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have nine-one-one this month. Um, in the amount, that will go to the City of Watertown in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and thirty cents.
So it's on the record, I will be abstaining from this vote. So a motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by McElhaney. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, action to approve automatic budget supplements for the state's attorney's office in the amount of six hundred and twelve dollars.
Yes, that was for some travel that they did receive, um, compensation for. They had to fill out something and they did receive compensation back. So in the amount of six hundred and twelve dollars that we will put back into her budget.
Motion by McElhaney, second. Second by Gable. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action to approve personnel changes, item number nineteen.
We only have two step increases, uh, Steve Mullingraff and John Ingles.
Take those in one motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any questions? Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action to approve travel requests, item number twenty.
We have one of those Director of Equalization Office going for, um, a board meeting.
In front of you, and it is a budgeted item.
Motion approved.
Move to approve by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-one, public notices where a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at commissioners. Anything that you can think of?
Tomorrow morning, there's a, uh, with a chamber, uh, government affairs. I don't know, I.
I usually go online.
And I'll probably come into it, so.
All right, could be a quorum. All right, could be a quorum of commissioners at the Government Affairs meeting. Don't have anything on my calendar, I think, so. All right, uh, anything for old business? Anything for old business? Nothing?
Mr. Sheriff just, um, on the jail, just updating folks over still. So the bids came in on the third, um, but it's pretty detailed, so you deal with all the subcontracting for the, this is in the jail. Remember, we did the advertisement for bid, um, a couple of weeks ago, and so, a little over two weeks ago. Um, so the, the, uh, CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk is going over that, so. Um, looking at probably next week, Tuesday, putting that on the agenda to go over that. And it's a little different, um, because we already have the CMIC, the Construction Manager in place, so this is a matter of mostly some, you know, subcontractors, um, and getting that all put together, so, uh, it's first time I've ever done this. Um, and then, once we, once we get that figured out, figure out groundbreaking, and get a little bit more resolution on the schedule. Um, and then today, there's a, there's another design meeting, um, just on another, on Teams meeting, um, that with, with architects. Our owners rep, share those, those folks to go over more details. So just for people's, just for my folks, the first bid package, it's to deal with all the exterior stuff, the ground, you know, the ground moving, earth moving, and then all the exterior stuff, so that we can focus on the second bid package, which is all the interior work that will be done when the weather's colder.
So what would possibly be on next week's agenda?
To, I guess to, I, I guess it would be to approve the bids. I'll get you the, the verbiage if, if we need it.
Okay.
We'll talk, we'll probably talk about that a little bit today.
Okay.
Commissioner Gable, do you think it would be, um, prudent to have a item on the agenda every week, just to update on the jail status? Or do you want to just take that?
Maybe.
We can just do it in business. Can do that.
Yeah.
Throughout the course of the project, it might not be a bad idea.
Sometimes it's, yeah, sometimes it's not too exciting, just to.
Okay.
But, because it's a lot of, it's a lot of detail work, but.
It's always exciting.
It is, it's exciting to meet persons.
We'll just, we'll, we'll keep it in old business. How's that? Okay. Can always change it if we want. Anything for new business? Nothing for new business.
I might mention, you will not be meeting the last Tuesday in July because it's the fifth Tuesday, so.
Oh, man. Looking forward to that meeting.
Put it on your calendars.
I'll probably be here anyway because I'll forget. All right, uh, any public comments for the open? Public comments for the open? Any commissioner comments?
A court meeting on, on Monday. I think there is a court claim. It's just an online meeting with the SDACC, so, but I'm not a clerk committee. So, clerk is captured on people's special program. That's pretty thick. Those packets tend to be pretty thick.
This is just a continuation, ours is.
Yeah, yeah, they're complicated.
Which, by the way, is a, is a good thing for us to participate in. It's a good insurance policy for us. Item number twenty-five, action to enter into executive session. We have a need for executive session. Motion by Johnson to adjourn, a second by McElhaney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.